Welcome to the meeting of February 18th. And we'll stand and say the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. To my left is Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
And further to his left is Nadine McCauley, who is going to McCarty, who is keeping track of us. And next to her is Greg McNally, who's the Director of Planning and Community Development. To my right is Commissioner Andy Hunt-Housen. Good morning, Andy. We are missing a couple of our legal biggles. Roger, our C A O Roger Waltz is there on the end. Let's see, we have, oh, reminder of the sign in sheet. There's a sign in sheet in the front. If all of you would sign your name and contact information in case, so that we have a complete record of this meeting. Okay, moving right along. Roger, it appears to me that there are no consent action items. Is that correct?
Chair Payne, that's correct. No items today. Thank you.
Okay, then we can move on to the agenda item with our friend and person of knowing everything there is to know about the Public Works Division. And this is approval of the Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan. Jenny?
Good morning, Chair Payne, County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jenny Chambers, Lewis and Clark County Public Works Director. I'm here today to present the Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan. Lewis and Clark County and the City of Helena, in conjunction with key stakeholders and public input from residents, have completed an Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan. The plan is intended to guide program development and implementation of long-term waste management for both the county and the city with the goal of creating an efficient, comprehensive system that will improve waste management services and increase diversion opportunities. In January 2022, a steering committee was formed to aid, and we hired a consultant to develop the plan. The committee consisted of one city and one county representative of each of the commission. Commissioner Tom Rolfe was the Lewis and Clark County representative on the steering committee. There was one representative from the city and county for the Public Works Department. There was a at-large public resident for both representing the city and the county, and one representative from a private waste management services. The group held multiple steering committee meetings, held several public meetings to provide updates and to receive comments. We completed a subset of the county and city through our survey results. We also presented information throughout the plan and the development of the plan through the, to the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste Board and also the Joint City-County Commission Board. The Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan will serve as a guiding document for future solid waste management. The recommendations outlined in the plan will require additional studies, design work, and a cost of service analysis prior to any implementation. Implementation strategies and information were presented to the Scratch, will be presented to the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste Advisory Board and to the Board of County Commissioners as part of a budget process or part of grant applications or upon receipt of grant funds. So just as a reminder, this is a guiding document, not deciding to implement any of those recommendations today that will require additional discussion and development through the plan as things move forward. The plan does outline several recommendations for both the city and county solid waste operations. Staff recommends acceptance of the final master plan for the Integrated Solid Waste. We'll provide a strategy to improve solid waste management into the future and happy to answer any questions today.
Thank you, Jenny. Commissioners, do you have any?
Chair Payne, if I could, please?
Yes, by all means, Commissioner, go for it.
Okay, great. Director Chambers, just to reiterate, so the public that's watching today, so they're clear and understanding, there was a long, and you just mentioned this in your comments, but a long drawn out process, very important process, where not only a member of city and county, but staff from city and county and the public had opportunity in multiple occasions to participate in providing input to this plan. Can you just talk about that process? Because it was pretty impactful and significant.
Yeah, Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. So yeah, as I indicated, the process started in January of 2022. So it's been going on for a couple of years now. We had several iterations of the plan. I think we had three drafts prior to this one being finalized.
Right.
And throughout the process, we held steering committee meetings and then also had open houses type public information sessions where the public was invited to come, talk to us about their concerns or questions that they might have on solid waste operations. In addition, we talked at our advisory board, Scratch Gravel Advisory Board, and also at the Joint City-County Commission meeting in order to kind of get that feedback. We attempted to do a pretty robust public survey that had a series of questions on there. It was posted on the Be Heard Helena page, on the City of Helena page. We did a press release associated with that survey. We sent out flyers to all the Scratch Gravel permit holders to try to get input on those surveys. Plus, they handed out things at the transfer station. We did get quite a few results back on the survey. Certainly not the full gamut of our population for both the City of Helena and the county. But for the city, they had 407 folks that responded. For the county, we had 130, or excuse me, 1,358. So about 2% for the city and about 3.5% for the county. That was just one attempt to get some public input on kind of the information. But in addition to that, we had public meetings. I had the steering committee and tried to piece through what folks would prefer as recommendations or what might be working well that they don't need changes for. One of the big highlights, I guess I would say during the public comment, is there's some questions about where the current transfer station is located at the City of Helena and whether or not people like that location or whether or not they should find another location to relocate that or what that looked like. So that is outlined in the plan. There was a lot of public input that they like the current services of the transfer station. There was wishes as far as making the tracking of the permit a little bit more accessible, so you knew how much pounds you had on your permit tag that was available still throughout the year. And then also some of the congestion of the traffic issues at the transfer station. But overall, that we got feedback on some of those areas. The other one for the county perspective that we got a lot of feedback on is that a lot of the county residents don't necessarily want collection system or services out within the county. They don't want to have dumpsters throughout the county that's getting picked up. They like the ability just to bring their waste in and then maybe have another container site located out in the valley that's closer to where they live. So some of that feedback we took into consideration as part of the recommendations of this plan.
Thank you. Madam Chair, if I could, I just wanted to make that point that this was over a two-year, very public process and very much tried to go out and get the public's input and the users' input, the stakeholders' input on this plan. So wasn't just thrown together by us or us getting together in a room with the City of Helena saying, hey, let's develop a new plan. This was really a robust effort to include the community. And I really appreciate that. And I just wanted to thank Commissioner Rolfe as well for being our representative on that committee. So thank you, Commissioner Rolfe. Thanks.
And Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt-Housen, I think it's also important to say that this is a guiding document.
Right.
That there's going to be a lot of other chances for public input because when you talk about implementation of any of these items, it's certainly going to come with cost. So for the City of Helena residents, there'll be additional dialogue and public input if they need to raise rates, implement new services associated with their solid waste management. The same for us in the county, that if we do anything based upon that, that's going to impact things on a rate base standpoint, we'll have more chances for public input.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Payne.
Tom, do you have any questions?
No, just a comment I might make. I think the process was quite thorough, looking at a lot of different options on what can be done. And there's some huge costs associated with some of the options that are available. But I think it seemed like the group that was looking at it was interested in keeping the price down and looking at what we can do to be more effective. A couple of the things that are in there are the possibility of enhancing the collection ability out at the current landfill site. And that, you know, the options, we looked at the options for kind of redesigning the current transfer station site to make it more efficient. I thought it was pretty well done. The one thing that I brought up at the meeting several times, and I think it's important to know, Appendix C has a survey, survey results. This survey is not a statistically accurate survey. It's probably more heavily sampled. The people who are biased in one direction or another have had particular interests. And so it's not really a typical survey where you would go out and try to find out what the public wants in general. And so I would say that it's, take that survey with a grain of salt because of the bias that seems to be built into it, into the way it was collected. But a lot of effort was put into it. Large number of meetings, meetings were held on Zoom so that people could get on when they wanted and if they had a question about it. Pretty well noticed when we were having meetings so that if people wanted to get on, they could. But I think it's good to have a roadmap for where we can go in the future. And again, I think that the consensus is, let's get the best trash collection, the best garbage collection we can for the buck and try to keep the price down for the citizen. So I think that the recommendations show different things and different options, but the more heavily supported options seem to be very cost-conscious. And it was an important effort to have future development of our trash collection system here in the county.
Thank you both. Obviously, you're more up to speed on solid waste than I am, but I've got a couple of questions for Jenny. Jenny, when you were doing this countywide plan, part of our county is Augusta and part of it is Lincoln. And I know they have solid waste issues that they are dealing with. And as I recall, Augusta has recently gone from having their solid waste hauled to Great Falls, and now it's being hauled into Lewis and Clark County landfill. Is this plan, does this include Lincoln and Augusta and their solid waste issues?
Chair Payne, great question. So it's Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan for the Greater Helena Valley. So the focus was not so much on all of Lewis and Clark County as a whole, which would include Augusta and Lincoln, but some of the recommendations and some of the efforts that we made between the partnership with the City of Helena and the county will certainly benefit those entities as well. So we have a lot of coordination meetings to discuss what those impacts are. And when you look at operations at the landfill, Lewis and Clark landfill with collection of waste or expanding the composting operation, and you make the processes more efficient and services provided, that will free up the ability to continue with some of the collection activities that we're doing in Augusta. So there's not necessarily a way to partner efforts from an integrated fashion other than the collection and then maybe what we're doing with recycling efforts. So the City of Helena right now does pick up the recycling for Augusta, brings it back to the City of Helena, and the private waste hauler recycles that material for the Augusta Solid Waste District. We also collect their municipal solid waste, their trash collection basically that goes to the landfill. But as far as how that board is being operated, there is a separate advisory board, as you're aware, in Augusta for that community to be, to talk to. The same thing in Lincoln. We're starting the conversations in Lincoln about whether or not that can be expanded. So it's a yes-no answer. They're not really documented in the plan. Those recommendations aren't really outlined in the plan, but the things in this plan will help with that overall county integration efforts.
Okay. Just, I believe Lincoln's solid waste is still hauled to Missoula. Is that correct?
Chair Payne, it goes to Great Falls. Republic Services in Great Falls as well.
Okay. Oh, then another thing that entered my mind. As I recall, we recently entered into an agreement with Broadwater County to accept their solid waste?
Chair Payne, that's correct.
And does that help balance the budget for Lewis and Clark County? Or how does that impact our ability to run the solid waste program?
Great question, Chair Payne. So as you, as, not looking so much at the collection side, but when you're looking at landfill and disposal options and the way you operate the Lewis and Clark landfill, any revenue that goes into the landfill operations will certainly be accounted for in the waste tipping rate that you establish as far as what your cost of your weight, the cost of ton per weight is of the disposal. So, but you also have operational expenses. So yes, while it does benefit the revenue coming into the Lewis Clark County landfill, it will be factored into the rate calculations moving forward. But what that does long term is unknown depending upon what that operations change. So it's very complicated. So at the Lewis and Clark landfill, we basically look at the expenditures of what it costs to operate it, the revenue coming in. And then you say, okay, if we take 50,000 tons of material, how much do we have to charge per ton, which is the tipping fee associated with that disposal of that material? And so that revenue will factor into that calculation.
Okay, I just thought of another question. So what is the impact on the life of our landfill? And I understand it's probably a landfill that's good for 100 years. However, our population has increased kind of more than planned. And now we're hauling in refuse from Broadwater County. And what is, instead of having a 100-year waste storage place, does that cut it back to 75 or 2? Or do you know that?
Yeah, Chair Payne, that's a great question. And just to ease, I guess, the public's concerns, we did evaluate that as far as, we definitely don't want to limit the lifespan of our landfill for Lewis and Clark County residents and for the City of Helena folks that live here. We currently have about 100 years at our current sighting location at the Lewis Clark landfill. We have another 20 acres adjacent to that, so that'll probably be another 100 and 120 years in addition to 100 years that we can do an expansion on. So you're looking at 200, 240 years. Broadwater County is bringing in about 4,000 tons of material. We currently collect about 60,000. So 4,000 to 60,000 is very minimal.
4,000 per year, per month?
Per year, per year, Chair Payne. So it's a very small amount of waste versus what we're already collecting. And if you can imagine, we're in 2025 and the technology has improved a lot on our solid waste disposal operations, whether you're diverting yard waste because you're composting, whether people are recycling and that material's not going in the landfill. We think that little bit of waste coming in is going to help longer term with the revenue coming in and supporting our neighbors, that it's going to have any kind of detrimental impact on the lifespan of the landfills because we're going to have increased diversion opportunities. We're going to have a new technology on compaction or how we manage the landfill. So we still are pretty optimistic that it's still going to be another 100 years from now, regardless of Lewis and Clark County accepting Broadwater waste.
Thank you. I know some of these questions are not possibly as sophisticated as the ones the other commissioners asked, but there's probably people out there in our community that say. Well, anyway, so thank you for that explanation, Jenny. I appreciate it. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, can I have a motion?
Chair Payne, I move to approve the Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan as explained by Ms. Chambers.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the master plan for the City of Helena and Lewis and Clark County Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan. Does the commission have any further comment?
Just if I might, Chair Payne, I just, I think that this is, like I said, a good roadmap for the future. There's some alternatives here to consider. And it helps us to be a little more focused as we're moving along for 100 years or whatever it happens to be. Thank goodness that there were some commissioners well before our time that were forward-thinking enough to provide us with a landfill site that is, that has the potential of taking care of our community for a long, long time.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comment, Andy?
No, Chair Payne, I'm good.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Oh, should I ask for public comment? No, Nico says no public comment needed. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approved this Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan as presented by Jenny Chambers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. It's passed on a 3-2-0 vote. And so we move on.
Good morning, Chair Payne. Commissioners, Greg McNally with the Community Development Planning Department here to present the next item on your agenda. Request for modifications for the conditions of approval for the preliminary approved Aerosmith subdivision. Chair Payne, Commissioners, I am not Rachel Ward. Rachel Ward is a planner in our office who originally presented this project to you on February 4th. She could not be with us today, so I will help her complete this project here, present it to you. Commissioners, for your consideration is the request to modify the preliminary approval for the Aerosmith subdivision to amend the preliminary approval based on the findings of facts that originally referenced a sequencing batch reactor or a wastewater treatment system to serve this subdivision. This was to serve this subdivision as well as three other adjacent subdivisions that are also on your agenda. Since the preliminary approval was granted on November 24, 2020, and subsequently then extended on November 24, to November 24, 2026, the applicant has determined that a Level 2 wastewater treatment system is a viable alternative based on the groundwater pump tests, which indicated a more favorable hydraulic connectivity than initially anticipated at the time of preliminary plot approval. The Department of Environmental Quality has since approved the proposed Level 2 treatment system. And the modified design would require individual lot owners to obtain a septic permit that would provide initial wastewater treatment before entering the gravity-fed sewer mains to that centralized wastewater treatment system. The applicant is requesting a modification, so we have that Level 2 wastewater treatment system reflected in his approval as opposed to the sequencing batch reactor, which was initially proposed. Commissioners, this is the Aerosmith subdivision. And as I said, it is one of four that you'll hear today. The other one is the Blacksmith, the other one, and another one is Copper Smith, and another one is Wordsmith. The Aerosmith one is in red on your screen. This is originally approved for 10 single-family residential lots and one lot for utility and fire protection. Commissioners, there are a set of findings of fact and conclusions as well as a recommended condition of approval to be added to this project, included in your staff report for this particular project. Again, this was heard on February 4th. We did present all these. We did hear one bit of public comment from Ms. Janet Armstrong, who had had some questions, not necessarily about our proposed modification, but asked about whether or not these would be individual homes, duplexes or triplexes. It was answered by Mr. Smith that these will be primarily single-family homes, although some of the lots in the Copper Smith subdivision will be duplexes, as well as some of the lots that are in the yellow subdivision, the Blacksmith subdivision, or orange will be commercial lots, those lots that front Canyon Ferry. And Ms. Armstrong also asked about, just concerns in general, about impacts to fire protection, impacts to traffic, and impacts to property taxes. And Mr. Smith addressed that as well. Commissioners, on this particular subdivision, Aerosmith, I'm available if you have any questions. Show you what this project looks like. The Aerosmith subdivision, again, is in the left corner, top-left corner here. You can see the wastewater treatment system just to the north in sort of the pink color. And then, of course, all that will be gravity-fed from the homes into that system. And Mr. Smith is available today as well.
Does the commission have any questions for the staff? Tom?
Chair Payne, good, Mr. McNally. Just very quickly, the findings of fact that are identified as new or changed from a staff perspective, looks like to me that, of course, the, from a batch reactor system to a Level 2 system is one piece of that puzzle. Another one is that DEQ has given their acceptance of that change, essentially that that level of treatment system is adequate. And our Public Health, Environmental Health Division has also said that they don't have any comments about this change. Correct?
Chair Payne, Commissioner.
And whatever else you might want to add to that?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, yes, the findings of fact begin for this particular project on page five of your staff report. And whenever we review subdivisions or modifications to subdivisions, we look at all the impact criteria. The primary impact criteria impacted by this proposed modification begin at the bottom of page five, Impacts on Local Services. And you'll see eight findings of fact related to impacts to water and wastewater. And that's all speaks to that, to the wastewater treatment system that's being proposed for this particular project. All the other impact criteria, which includes agriculture, agricultural water users, the natural environment, wildlife, wildlife habitat, the compliance with our subdivision regulations, impacts on public health and safety, and compliance with survey requirements, and the provision of easements for utilities as well as the provision of legal and physical access. Those impacts will remain unchanged and the findings will simply indicate that there's no additional impact on those items. And the conclusion that the mitigation that's provided for in the original preliminary approval will stand for those.
Right. Thank you. Madam Chair, just another point to make that Mr. McNally, just for the public's interest, these, this subdivision and the other three that we're going to be discussing here have already been conditionally, preliminarily approved. And this is simply a modification of those, of those facts and conditions because of this proposed change in wastewater treatment system. Correct?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, that's correct.
So we're not debating the subdivision as a whole or what's there. It's already been preliminarily, conditionally approved. This is a consideration of this amendment. So I just wanted to be clear, we talked about this last time, but I just want to make sure it's clear on the record that that's what we're discussing.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, very good. I very much appreciate the ability to just clarify that we are only talking about how this modification will affect the conditions. And it really will only require the addition of one condition of approval as recommended by staff. And it really will only require the addition of one condition of approval as recommended by staff, which is simply the notification to future property owners that they will be required to get a septic tank permit for installation on their, on their individual property prior to construction.
Thank you, Chair Payne. Ready to move forward?
Thank you. I see that the applicant is out in the, in the audience. Would you like to make any comments, Mr. Smith?
Kim Smith, 7510 Applegate Drive. Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman. I'm here to answer questions. Other than that, I have no comments.
This is a one-issue cleaning up to make sure everything is done correctly. Is that right?
Correct.
Do you have any further questions for the applicant?
I think the staff has done a good job of identifying what the change is. And that it is one issue, is what we're talking about on all four of these, these small subdivisions. And there doesn't appear to be any questions. I think the staff has been very thorough about it.
According to my list of things I'm supposed to verify is, I'm supposed to ask you that you have received a copy of this staff report, and you're ready to proceed as is described in this staff report?
Yes.
Okay. Do either of you gentlemen have any questions for Mr. Smith?
Maybe one added comment. I hope to have the subdivisions ready to go in later in the summer.
Will they be, I mean, are you doing first one and then, or is it all, will they all be developed at the same time?
All at the same time.
Okay.
I would think be the easiest.
Okay, and now we need to ask if there's any public comment. Any public comment? At this point, we will close the public comment on, on this section. Close by the chair. Do you have any questions? Or the public? Does the public have any questions? The applicant have any questions? Or the staff? Greg, you have anything?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, I'm ready to move forward. No addition of comments.
Okay, so we've closed the public comment. There were no public comments which should be rebutted. If there are no more questions for the commission, then we can move on to the decision-making portion of this.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, if you don't mind, I'll just give you a breakdown. So when we take decision, take action on decisions, there are several steps we go through. And this is just going to give a preview here for the public here, what the commission will be going through. Generally, the commission makes a global motion for conditional approval of the project as presented by staff. And without voting on that motion, then takes up its consideration of the findings of fact as presented by staff. The commission can add findings, subtract findings, or amend findings through that process. Again, there'd be some votes on that, but, and then the third step would be for the commission to accept a conclusion based on those findings of fact that there are impacts to the project, and that those impacts can be mitigated with the conditions of approval in the staff report. And again, the commission can add, can subtract, or amend those conditions of approval. And after they've taken up those findings of fact and those conditions of approval, the commission can go to step four, to take action on that initial motion that was made. So kind of a long process here to get through here, but just to let the public know that what's going to be happening here, and we'll, we'll be doing this four times, so we'll take it up one at a time here with these steps.
So at this point, we need, I need to have a global motion for the consideration of the modifications to the Aerosmith subdivision.
Madam Chair, I've moved it. We conditionally approve the request for modifications to the Aerosmith subdivision application.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we conditionally approve the requested modifications for the Aerosmith subdivision. Is there any discussion? If not, before we vote on the motion, let's first take up the findings of fact for this project. So I need a motion to accept the findings of fact for modification of the Aerosmith subdivision as presented by the staff report.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the findings of fact for the modification of the Aerosmith subdivision as prepared in the staff report. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, Chair Payne.
Go for it.
Just to, we talked about these findings already, but I think it's important just to point out and that the proposed change has been presented to and essentially accepted by Department of Environmental Quality. Our Health Department didn't have concerns with these, modify, propose modifications. And well, that, those are the main parts of the findings that I wanted to discuss. I think that the treatment system will be adequate and protective of the, of the environment as well as the citizens that are going to live in these, these dwellings. And that was the point of making sure that these modifications, proposed modifications went through the processes that are necessary to make sure that they are acceptable and adequate. And I think that's been done according to the findings from my perspective, and so I'll support this motion. Thanks.
Maybe.
Chair Payne, just a thought, just reiterating that, that the finding, there's only one area of finding of fact. All the other areas that we never really consider are not altered. And it's only in that area of impact on local services and finding of fact regarding water and wastewater. And we've analyzed, the staff has analyzed this, we've, we've talked about it. It's, the, you know, it's pretty, it's clear that staff is, is feels like that there is, it's going to be, do the job for that community.
And, and under our laws, this is intended to protect all of us. So it's my understanding that we have now, the commission has looked at the actions that have been presented, the public comment, which seems to be, there isn't any, and your own knowledge. I mean, this seems like a, a pretty well-thought-out plan to help address our need for housing in our area.
Chair Payne, I think we have a motion and a second on the floor for the findings. So we haven't voted on that yet.
Let's take action on this motion. All those in favor of the motion to accept the findings of fact for the modification of the Smith subdivision as prepared by staff in the staff report say aye. Aye.
It's Aerosmith that we're dealing with.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Smith.
I think you just said Smith.
I apologize. Thank you for catching that, Tom. Modification of the Aerosmith subdivision as prepared by the staff in the staff report, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, that, the finding of fact is accepted on the modification of the Aerosmith subdivision as to its wastewater treatment amendment. Okay.
Yep.
Let's move on to the conclusions as presented in the staff report. So could I have a motion to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report? That modification of the Aerosmith subdivision will have adverse impacts, and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the modified condition of approval as presented in the staff report.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report, that the modification of the Aerosmith subdivision will have adverse impacts, and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the modified condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report. So maybe we should now talk about the conclusions as presented in our report here. Gentlemen?
Madam Chair, I don't have any discussion.
You don't have anything to say?
Ready to move.
The legal guidance that I have received tells us we need to talk about conclusions because that's, I mean, we use our findings of fact, and the conclusions are that this proposed modification will not have impacts on anything other than the
Madam Chair, I guess I'll make a comment then. So via the motion that we just made, the conclusions will have adverse impacts, that the modification will have adverse impacts on, on the subdivision, but that the impacts can be mitigated by the modified condition of approval, which we'll be discussing next. But absolutely that there, there is identified impacts for sure. And how are we going to address those impacts, those findings that we've already approved? And now via this process, we'll discuss the, the condition that will be presented to make sure that these impacts are addressed. So that, I'm right, I'm fine moving forward, ready to move forward.
I'm, I'm looking at the conditions of approval, number one.
The only, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
The only condition of approval that gets, that is added here is condition number 15Z. And it is a notification of restrictive covenants that indicates, it'll be indicated on the plat that giving the individual homeowners, property owners, a notification that they'll have to have a septic tank and be part of a public wastewater treatment system as required, reviewed, and approved by the Lewis and Clark County Public Health. So that, that's the added condition as a result of this proposed modification.
Commissioner Hunt-Housen, thank you for pointing that out to me. I hadn't dug all the way back in my packet. Thank you. Tom, do you have any other comments or discussion?
I think we've covered.
Conclusion indicates that, that it will be, you know, and the adverse effect will be satisfied.
And Chair Payne, Commissioners, if I could just add, in your motion, I've lumped in both the conclusions on the project as well as the addition of this condition of approval. So considering those conclusions as well as this added condition of approval that staff is recommending. So you've talked about the condition and the conclusions, and that the condition will mitigate the impacts as identified by the findings of fact that you've adopted here for the impacts to local services.
Thank you. So let's take action on this motion to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report that modification of the Aerosmith subdivision will have adverse impacts, and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the modified condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. This motion is passed on a vote of three to nothing. So now we have a, to take action on the global motion for consideration of the modifications to the Aerosmith subdivision. We have considered the findings of fact, conclusions, and conditions of approval for the requested modification of the Aerosmith subdivision. I would entertain an amendment to our global motion to conditionally approve the request, requested modifications of the Aerosmith subdivision based on the findings of fact, conclusions, and condition of approval that we have voted on.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded to conditionally approve the requested modification of the Aerosmith subdivision based on the findings of fact, conclusions, and conditions of approval accepted by the commission. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's take action on this motion to conditionally approve the requested modification to the Aerosmith subdivision based on the findings of fact, conclusions, and conditions of approval that have been accepted by the commission. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those against, same sign. Passed on a three to nothing vote. Thank you. Moving right along. We have, next on our agenda is a request for modification of conditional approval of the Blacksmith subdivision. Original hearing on this was February 4th, 2025. And we'll consider the request to modify the conditional approval of the Blacksmith subdivision as it relates to the public wastewater treatment system. Mr. McNally?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, good morning again. Greg McNally with Community Development Planning Department, standing in for Ms. Rachel Ward, who could not be here with us today. Again, you have a request for modification for the Blacksmith subdivision. This is the subdivision shown on your screen in orange in the bottom-left corner of your subdivision, or yellow as how you see it. Commissioners, this project was preliminary approved on November 24th, 2020, subsequently extended to November 24th, 2026. The applicant is proposing a level-two wastewater treatment system to serve this project as opposed to the originally approved or considered for approval sequencing batch reactor wastewater treatment system. As indicated with the prior project, DEQ has granted approval for this level-two wastewater treatment system. And the modified design would require individual lot owners to obtain a septic permit that would provide initial wastewater treatment before entering a gravity-fed system to go to a sewer main for the collection of centralized level-two treatment. There is findings of fact in your staff report related to this proposal, just as there were in the last project for the Aerosmith subdivision, as well as a recommended condition of approval to be added to this project, which is on page 11 of your, of your staff report. which is on page eleven of your, of your staff report. Condition sixteen BB, once again, providing notice to, uh, future proprietors that all individual, that, um, that individual septic tanks must be installed as part of the public wastewater treatment system. And those are required to be reviewed and approved by the Lewis and Clark Environmental Health Department. Commissioners, uh, the applicant is available as well as staff, if, um, you have any questions. Oh, and I'll indicate, again, we did receive the one bit of public comment on these projects, uh, from Ms. Armstrong, who, who asked some questions in general about those subdivisions, um, that we, um, yeah, other responded to or Mr. Smith responded to, uh, but nothing related to this particular proposed modification.
Greg, I'm having a little trouble understanding you. Could you talk slower or louder for both?
I will do my best. Thank you, Chair Payne.
So.
Just a que- a question of mine, uh, Chair Payne, I, would it be appropriate to, to, um, bring the comments from the Aerosmith, uh, subdivision down into the discussion of the, of this one? To move that, that, or all that discussion, since it's essentially the same thing?
You know, it may essentially be the same thing, but I think we need to get it on the record.
Right.
And so I'm not sure if we just say we're, we're adopting all those. What do you think there? Nico?
Chair Payne and Commissioners, so I think you should treat each of these individually because they're individual subdivisions. And so, as we've kind of talked about before, there's there's some typical stuff that, or there's part of the presentation at the start that was probably applicable to all of them. But as you're working through the modification of a condition of approval on this, your discussion should be, um, they're each independent and distinctive one another.
All right.
And basically what we're doing is trying to save the taxpayers' money by heading off lawsuits ahead of time. Right? Okay. So now we move into do we have any questions for the applicant, for the applicant's representative? Mr. Smith? Could you come to the podium, please?
Kim Smith, seventy-five ten Applegate. Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you. Um, I just want to verify that you have received a copy of the staff report and you are ready to proceed with the, the modification as described.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, do you have any questions for the applicant? All right, Mr. Smith, that's enough for now. Thank you. Do we have any public comment? Seeing no public comment, um, I believe at this point we will, uh, take no further comment, um, and we will close the public comment section, uh, of this hearing. Do you have any questions of the public, the applicant or the staff? No, seeing none. Chair is supposed to allow the applicant and the staff opportunity to rebut statements made by the public and the public has not taken advantage of the opportunity. Uh, if there are no more questions, uh, let's move into the decision-making portion of this operation. I need a, um, global motion to conditionally approve the requested modifications on the Blacksmith subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to conditionally approve the requested modification to the Blacksmith subdivision application. Is there any discussion? If not, before we vote, vote on this motion, let's first take up the findings of fact for this specific project.
Chair Payne. If I might interject really quickly, I, one of the things, and, and Mr. McNally can set me straight here when I go awry button. So we're not conditionally approving something right now, we are modifying conditions of approval. And so I think it's just, I think some acknowledgement for the board as well that you've already conditionally approved these subdivisions. And so what the applicant has asked is to modify one of those conditions or has modified a plan. So we're not conditionally approving something right now. We, uh, you, the, the board is
We're modifying?
You're modifying the conditions of approval.
That have already been approved.
So that's, so we already kind of have that condition of approval thing. So we actually are making modifications today. There's nothing further that the applicant's going to need to do for today. Obviously, moving forward, he's going to have to go through the whole process.
Would you concur with that, Mr. Greg?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, uh, appreciate the, uh, guidance here from, from our county attorney. I would concur.
Okay, I'm sure that's absolutely clear in everyone's mind. So I need a, let's take backsies, we'll redo the motion.
All right.
Work for everybody? Okay. Excuse me. I'll entertain a global motion to approve the requested modifications to the Blacksmith subdivision. I didn't have to put conditional or anything in there. Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the requested modification to the Blacksmith subdivision application. Is there any discussion? If not, before we vote on the motion, let's take up the findings of fact for this particular project. I'll entertain a motion to accept the findings of fact for modification of the Blacksmith subdivision as prepared by staff in the staff report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the findings of fact for modification of the Blacksmith subdivision as prepared by staff in the staff report. Is there any discussion? Let's look at those findings.
Among the findings of fact, uh, Chair Payne, uh, there's only one area, uh, and that is in the, uh, under impacts of on local services, findings of fact regarding water and wastewater. And there are, uh, uh, eight findings of fact listed by staff. And, uh, they, they, uh, all are, 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 uh, well documented. And all of those findings of, of facts have merit. There's a the condition of approval, uh, in number one, was approved to mitigate the impacts. After preliminary plat approval was granted for subdivision, applicant's consultant indicated a better way to, to solve the problem. In lieu of installing a sequencing batch reactor, the applicant is requesting to install a level-two wastewater treatment system. The applicant received DEQ approval for the, for, for the level-two wastewater treatment system. And, uh, the change, uh, unlike the initially proposed wa- public wastewater treatment system, each lot will now have an additional septic for an, for initial treatment that will connect, uh, via four, uh, four inch service lines to the gravity of, uh, sewer main. Requests, uh, and of course, they've gone through and through all the notifications and requests for comments. And the, the condition for approval is still app- applicable to address impacts from the public. And, uh, it does not change the, the end result.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comment?
I think you covered it well.
I think he did. Motion has been made and seconded to accept the findings of fact for the modification of the Blacksmith subdivision as prepared by staff in the staff report. Um, and we should now take action um, on the motion. All those in favor of the motion to accept the findings of fact for modification of the Blacksmith subdivision as prepared by staff in the staff report, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes three to nothing. Now, we need to, uh, have a motion to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report that the modification of the Blacksmith subdivision will have adverse effects and those adverse effect, impacts can be mitigated by the modified condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report that the modifications of the Blacksmith subdivision will have adverse impacts and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the modified condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report.
And I think specifically it's on page seven of the staff report.
Thank you.
Conditions on page eleven. Where you had it, yeah. The new condition.
Yeah, the new condition. Okay, so, um, let's see. We've already moved and seconded, is that correct? Okay. Uh, motion has been made and seconded to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report that the modification of the Blacksmith subdivision will have adverse impacts and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the modified condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report. Is there any, any discussion? Changes. I'm, I see that before voting on changes to the conditions of approval, we're supposed to hear from the applicant about those changes.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, recommend it if you're going to make any changes or any additions to the conditions to just, uh, inquire with the applicant if they're okay with that. Um, I don't hear any discussion about, uh, making any addition or, or changes to the conditions that are presented by staff.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, even though we didn't have in-depth discussion. Well, we did kind of. Uh, let's take action on this motion to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report that the modification of the Blacksmith subdivision will have adverse impacts and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the modified condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's against, same sign. Motion passed three to nothing. Okay, now now that we have considered the findings of fact, conclusions and conditions of approval for the requested modification of the Blacksmith subdivision, I would entertain an amendment to our global motion to conditionally approve the requested modification of the Blacksmith subdivision based on the findings of fact, conclusions and condition of approval we have voted on. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion has been moved and seconded to conditionally approve the requested modification of the, of the Blacksmith subdivision based on the findings of fact, conclusions and the condition of approval accepted by the commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion. Let's take action on this motion to conditionally approve the requested modification on the Blacksmith subdivision based on findings of fact, conclusions and conditions of approval accepted by the commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Motion passes three to nothing. This is exhausting. It's like Groundhog Day. We've done this. Okay, now, uh, agenda item number six, request for modification of conditional approval of the Copper Smith subdivision that was heard on February fourth, two thousand twenty-five. The applicant is Ki- Kim Smith and, uh, Mr. McNally is filling in for Rachel Ward.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners, Greg McNally with Community Development and Planning Department. Uh, presenting to you the request for modification of the preliminary approval for the Copper Smith subdivision. This was again preliminary approved on November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. Uh, the applicant, um, has requested a modification to those conditions of approval that came with that preliminary approval to, um, utilize a level-two wastewater treatment system as opposed to the sequencing batch reactor system that was initially considered with the original preliminary plat approval. The Department of Environmental Quality has since approved that, uh, the proposed level-two wastewater treatment system. And the modified design would require individual lot owners to obtain a septic tank permit that would provide individual wastewater treatment before entering a gravity-fed, uh, sewer main to that centralized wastewater treatment system that the applicant is proposing. Commissioners, you first heard this on February fourth. At that time, there was just one little bit of public comment that we heard from Mrs. Janet Armstrong. Uh, not, nothing in regard to the proposed, uh, modification, but just spoke in general about the subdivision and had questions about its, its impacts on fire and traffic, as well as what was being proposed for the use of the lots. Uh, those answers, or those questions were responded to by my, uh, Ms. Ward or, uh, Mr. Smith at that time. Commissioners, uh, the applicant, Mr. Smith, is present today. Uh, and, uh, there are findings of fact in your staff report as well as a, a recommended condition of approval associated with this proposed modification. And if you have any questions of staff, I am available.
Thank you. Can the applicant come forward and verify that you received a copy of the staff report?
Kim Smith, seventy-five ten Applegate, uh, Commissioners, yes, I have.
And are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do you have any, does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Let's have public comment. Is there any public comment on, uh, this, uh, modification for the Copper Smith subdivision? Seeing none. Um, we will close the public comment period at this point. Does the commission have any questions of the public, the applicant or the staff? Seeing none. There's been no public comment to which the applicant or the staff should address or rebut. So there's no more questions. Let's move to decision-making. I need a global motion to conditionally how to get rid of the conditionally. I'll entertain a motion to approve the requested modifications of the Copper Smith subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the requested modification to the Copper Smith subdivision. Is there any discussion? If not, um, before we vote on this Before we vote on this motion, let's take up the findings of fact for this particular project. Can I have a motion to accept the findings of fact for the modification of the Copper Smith subdivision as prepared by staff in the staff report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the findings of fact for the modification of the Copper Smith subdivision as prepared by staff in the staff report. Is there any discussion?
Chair Payne, the only change is an under impacts on local services finding of fact regarding water and wastewater. Fact, finding of fact, one was that the preliminary approval was based on using an off-site sequencing batch reactor. The second finding of fact was that some, there was, the conditional approval was approved to mitigate the impacts of the findings of facts after preliminary plat approval was granted. The applicant's consultant suggested that, that it would be better to use a different system in lieu of the sequencing back reactor. And they're going to want to use a Level 2 wastewater treatment system. The applicant received DEQ approval for a Level 2 wastewater treatment system. And that unlike the initial proposal, wastewater treatments, each lot will now have an individual septic for initial treatment that will connect to a four-inch service line to, to the eight-inch gravity sewer mains. Requests, requests for comments were sent to departments within the, in state, local government. And the, and the Environmental Health Division said that, that they would approve that, that second new system. And while the condition of approval, number one, is still applicable, the public wastewater treatment system, including DEQ approvals and septic permit. Conditional approval. Notifying property owners that need to have individual septic tanks will mitigate impacts resulting from the modification, modify, modification to propose to the original.
Thank you. Commissioner Rolfe, is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay. So, let's see. We already have a motion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to accept the findings of fact for the modification of the Copper Smith subdivision as prepared by staff in the staff report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to nothing. Now, we need to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report that the modification of the Copper Smith subdivision will have adverse impacts and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the modified condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report that modifications of the Copper Smith subdivision will have adverse impacts and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the modified condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, the modified condition or the additional condition is 15Z in the conditions of approval. And that points out that each individual lot owner will be informed that they'll have to install septic tanks to be part of this public wastewater system as required by Lewis and Clark Public Health.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, let's take action on the motion to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report that modification of the Copper Smith subdivision will have adverse impacts and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the modified condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say same thing. Motion passes three to nothing. Now, we have to act on the global motion for consideration of the modifications of the Copper Smith subdivision. We have considered the findings of fact, conclusions and conditions of approval for the requested modifications of the Copper Smith subdivision. I would entertain an amendment to our global motion to approve the requested modifications of the Copper Smith subdivision based on the findings of fact, conclusions and conditions of approval that we have voted on.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the requested modification of the Copper Smith subdivision based on findings of fact, conclusions and conditions of approval accepted by the commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Let's take action on the motion to approve the requested modification of the Copper Smith subdivision based on findings of fact, conclusions and condition of approval accepted by the commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to nothing. One more. This is, Greg, would you tell us what this is all about?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, good morning. Greg McNally with Community Development Planning Department. The next item on your agenda.
Talk slower.
The next item on your agenda is the consideration of a request for modification for the Wordsmith subdivision. This is a subdivision that was preliminary approved for the use of a sequencing batch reactor for its wastewater treatment back in November 24th of 2020. The applicant has determined that a Level 2 wastewater treatment system is a viable alternative for this, for wastewater treatment for this project. And the Department of Environmental Quality has since approved the proposed Level 2 wastewater treatment system. The modified design would require individual lot owners to obtain a septic permit that would provide initial wastewater treatment before entering the gravity-fed sewer mains to the centralized Level 2 treatment components and drain fields for this project. Commissioners, the Wordsmith subdivision is shown on your screen in blue. This project would serve seven single-family residential lots. I'm available for questions if you have any, and the applicant is available as well.
Greg, just to help me clarify in my mind, the, the lot at the top of the map is, it's, it's a lot bigger, it's a much bigger lot than the others. And I'm, in your first presentation, I know you said something about this is going to have, what's that lot to be used for? Is that a residential lot?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, just a, a lot on the screen. You're talking about the, the larger lot in the blues project just above north of the road, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. That is an existing residential lot, continue to be a residential lot. And there are six additional proposed lots with this subdivision. And if I'm incorrect on that, I'm sure the applicant will correct me on that.
I think we should have Mr. Smith come up and help unconfuse the chair.
Kim Smith, 7510 Applegate. The two parcels to the north are both 20-acre parcels, and there is one living unit on both of them.
No, that's not what I'm talking about.
Oh.
I'm talking about in the, right there.
Okay.
What is that?
That is a, that will be an occupied residential lot after the subdivision is completed. Right now, it's part of that whole five-acre piece. After it's subdivided, the existing house will remain on its own lot.
So, that lot is already developed?
Correct. That five-acre tract is already developed.
The five-acre?
In blue.
Okay, the whole, the whole blue thing is five acres.
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, and I have read the staff report.
You're getting good at this, four times through, we'll both have it. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Let's see. Commission, have any questions for the staff? And he did, he verified that he's received a copy. Do you have any questions for the applicant or their representative? Nope. Okay, we're going to take some public comment here. Is there any public comment regarding this modification? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment at this point. And again, ask the commission if they have any questions of the public, the applicant, or the staff. Seeing none. And because there is no public comment, I don't believe that the applicant or the staff has to rebut statements made by the public. There are no more questions for the commission, then let's move on to decision-making. I will entertain a global motion to approve the requested modifications of the Wordsmith subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the requested modification to the Wordsmith subdivision application. Is there any discussion? If not, let's, before we vote on the motion, let's first take up the findings of fact for this project. I will entertain a motion to accept the findings of fact for modification of the Wordsmith subdivision as prepared by staff in the staff report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the findings of fact for modification of the Wordsmith subdivision as prepared by staff in the staff report. Is there any discussion?
Chair Payne, the findings of fact discuss how the original approval was done with using an, an off-site sequencing, sequencing batch reactor. But the, that the consultant that was working with the applicant proposes a different system, including, which is a Level 2 wastewater treatment system instead, and has received a, and the applicant has received a, an approval from the Department of Environmental Quality and other agencies that, that, that will work as well. That the, the each lot will now have individual septic tank for individual, initial treatment connecting by a four-inch service line to an 8-inch gravity sewer main. Location of the mains in the off-site drain field will not change. Requests for comments were sent out to Environmental Health Division and Montana Department of Environmental Quality subdivision division and, and to neighbors in the area. And no, no comments have been received. And while the condition of approval is still applicable to address the impacts of the public water treatment system, the, with the updated DEQ approvals with the new system, everything seems to be in order.
Thank you, Commissioner Rolfe. Any other discussion?
No.
All right, we can, let's have a motion to accept. We're on the conclusions, right?
Madam Chair, I think we have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second.
On the floor to prove the findings. I don't think we voted on that yet.
I lose track. Thank you.
Easy to do.
So, there's been a motion made and it's seconded to accept the findings of fact for modification of the Wordsmith subdivision as prepared by staff in the staff report. All those in favor of the motion to accept the findings of fact for modification of the Wordsmith subdivision as prepared by staff, say aye.
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 All those against, same sign. Motion passes three to nothing. Now, I'll entertain a motion to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report that the modification of the Wordsmith subdivision will have adverse impacts and those adverse impacts can be mitigated by the modified condition of approval as presented by staff in the staff report. Is there any discussion?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, just want to clarify that that was the motion. I know the motion was, was moved just to accept the conclusions, but was it also intended to identify that the adverse impacts, that there will be adverse impacts and that those adverse impacts can be mitigated by a condition?
Yes, from my perspective.
Okay, are we, did we address that issue?
Yes.
Efficiently, okay.
Madam Chair, the, the condition added is 14U in this, this particular subdivision and, and the conditions of approval. And again, it's a notification that the individuals will need to have, or the individual lots will need to have septic systems and part of the overall community wastewater treatment system that will be reviewed and approved by Lewis and Clark Public Health.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved, discussed, discussed again. Let's take action on the motion to accept the conclusions as presented in the staff report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, same sign. Motion passes three to nothing. Oh, now, we have considered the findings of fact, the conclusions and conditions of approval for the requested modification of the Wordsmith subdivision. I would entertain an amendment to our global motion to approve the requested modification of the Wordsmith subdivision based on the findings of fact, conclusions and conditions of approval we have voted on.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the requested modification of the Wordsmith subdivision based on findings of fact, conclusions and conditions of approval accepted by the commission. Is there any discussion?
Chair Payne, I just, this is a little bit of a long, long ordeal on four subdivisions. I just hope that Mr. Smith and his organization is able to make enough money selling these that he'll come back and bring us some more.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, let's take action on the motion to approve the requested modifications of the wordsmith subdivision based on the findings of fact, conclusions and conditions of approval as accepted by the commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to nothing. Boy, that was, that was a slog. Well, is there any, any public comment? On any matter, not. There it is. Within the jurisdiction of the commission, that is not on the agenda above. Seeing none, we adjourn this meeting. Thank you.